We weren't supposed to like going, I don't know what this is.
There's no cameras here.
And Nick, plus you get a few too. Nick, of course.
Morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
The prayer today, this morning prayer, how powerful and eternal God, splendor of true light and never-ending day. At this return of the morning hour, chase away the sins of mankind and fill our minds with glory, glory of your coming through Christ our Lord. Amen.
My prayers. The financials that I approved on July 29th was supplemental appropriation from the auditor in the unclaimed money fund to allow for additional distributions. Item number two, the items approved on August 4th for the Department of Aging was for the hiring of Sarah Braun to the position of part-time Adult Day Services Assistant, number 1041-1, to be effective August 18, 2025, at the rate of $19.23 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. And that is all.
Okay. Item number three, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes of June 17.
Those include my presence. I move to approve item number three. Ms. Spiller? Ms. Ruffin?
Aye.
Yes.
Good morning, Adrian.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office. Today's financials include a supplemental in the Commissioner's Building Improvement Fund for the Hill Project's expense account to set aside appropriations to cover the remodel of the Prosecutor's Office. It's a cash transfer from the General Fund to the Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Block Grant Fund for the local match amount on grant 2024-JG-A03-47070 for additional flock camera installations. Among the encumbrances are travel encumbrances from the ADP Board to attend the 2025 American Association for State and Local History Annual Conference. From engineering to attend the County Engineers Association of Ohio G.I.S. Conference. And in OSHA Construction Trades Training and from job and family services to attend the 2025 Public Children's Services Association of Ohio Annual Conference. There's also a then-and-now encumbrance from the Common Police Court to Ohio Alcohol Monitoring Systems LLC for monitoring services from October of 2024 that were not previously encumbered. Among other vouchers, there was $58,500 from the Auditor's Office, DSRI Incorporated, for the annual licensing agreement for G.I.S. mapping, software, and support, which was the same as last year. $34,629 from the Commissioner's Office to NOACA for fiscal year 2026 membership dues, which go from July of this year to June of next year. And that's also the same cost as last year. And finally, $467,044.87 from the Engineers Office to Rania Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Clay Street, Leggett Road, and Auburn Road.
I move to approve the financials.
Second.
Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, and then the item number five on the agenda is the Auditor's Office is requesting the board accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county auditor for the months of May and June 2025 pursuant to ORC 319.35.
I move to approve. Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffin? Aye.
Yes.
And in a similar vein, number six is the Treasurer's Office is requesting the board accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county treasurer for the months of May and June 2025 pursuant to ORC 319.35.
I move to approve. Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffin? Aye.
Yes.
And then item number seven is from last week, the tabled Infinity Partial Pay Request, number 22, for the Jodah County Courthouse Expansion, GMP Phase 1 and 2 expenses in the amount of $950,590.72. And I know that there were some questions about the review of these pay requests, and they are reviewed by TDA, who actually signs off on them, and by Jared Parker of NV5. And he did indicate to me that, and forwarded an email in which he indicated his agreement with the amounts on that pay request.
Very good. Then I move to approve item number seven.
Second.
Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. Frank, into the GADP Board. I'm here today to request approval of the revised code provision 307.47 so that ADP can enter, potentially enter into a contract with Parkland Township to provide ADP services.
What services is Parkland looking for? Do we know?
I mean, general technology, it looks like. We've had some very preliminary discussions. They're definitely interested in securing the fiscal side of things and how they interact with the UAN environment.
Okay. I mean, that probably is a good decision on their part.
They would very much, I think, like the help, yes.
Okay. So I'll move to approve item number eight.
Thank you.
Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Rick Blamer, Airport Authority. The Airport Authority is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25158, authorizing President of the Jodah County Board of Commissioners to execute electronically and submit the Federal Aviation Administration Grant Offer for Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Airport Infrastructure Grant, Grant Number 3-39-0054-029-2025 for the construction of a T-hanger in the amount of $585,000.
So Commissioners, did you have a chance to review that paperwork for the grant?
Did.
Yes.
Was there anything that stood out to you?
Not really. It looked pretty standard.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure we all reviewed it because our VPA specifically said she, to make sure that we all understood the grant. Second. I'd like to have discussion first before we vote. So I, we received this letter from Mr. Hess dated August 4th saying, "I'm writing to confirm that to the best of our knowledge, essentially, the airport authority has complied with all of the conditions of the grant." Do you know, Mr. Blamer, what was Mr. Hess's basis for stating that?
We were requested to provide a letter to you for that. This grant is pretty much standard from all the other FAA grants. There were a couple of new provisions which we're working at complying with. But to the best of our knowledge, we are.
Okay. But what is your knowledge? Because in the past, you've complied with them. And like, what are, what are your practices and procedures to ensure compliance with these FAA regulations?
We do periodic reviews when we have new grants to see if there's anything in the grants that are different than what we've done before. And then to kind of make a checklist, as pilots often do, of compliance issues.
I mean, because I, I'll be honest, I read through that. I mean, there's, there's like a book that says, "The average person commits three felonies a day", which is, you know, probably hyperbole. But the idea is that there's so many laws, you can't comply with them all, right? And when I was reading through this grant agreement, I mean, there's no way any airport in this country is probably complying with all of these, these regulations. So I just, I just wanted to know what sort of procedures you have had in place. I mean, do you have, you know, certain posters in your bathrooms? I mean, are you doing these things? How are you making sure that?
Got a variety of posters. Most of them are all over the airport and in different locations for the required documentation.
Okay.
I mean, I'm confident it's very thorough because if you mess up this one, you won't get the next one.
Right.
Well, I'm not worried about that. I mean, I'm also worried about taxpayers being on the hook for additional funds. That's my concern.
Okay. Now, for this grant, there, basically, we've agreed that the airport will be on the hook for anything additional over and above the cost of this building.
Is that in pay part? Is there? I mean, I guess we just.
I thought that was part of our original agreement.
I mean, I don't think there was an agreement. I think we just submitted the money to.
There was some, I believe, a document that went along with that.
There was a resolution, but I mean, there wasn't an agreement. There wasn't a bilateral agreement, to the best of my knowledge.
Well, I know it's our intention to, you know, make sure that this gets done and that we weren't going to ask for anything additional beyond what you've already granted us.
Okay. I'll call the question. Ms. Spiller? Ms. Ruffin? No.
Ms. DeBoer? Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Frank.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shane.
Shane Jar with the Engineers Office, here to present items 10 and 11. They're both related to bridges in the southern part of the county, or the eastern part of the county, excuse me. And the bridges were inspected in this year, and they meet the 100% legal loads, but there is an overload restriction for specifically related to emergency vehicles. So I'll read item number 10. Engineers Office requesting the board acknowledge and the recommendation in post-load limits on Owen Road for structure GEAT-0219-0033 in Parkland Township for an emergency vehicle weight limit as follows. Two axles, 28 tons; three axles, 36 tons pursuant to ORC 5577.071.
Do you want to go into element two?
Sure. Similarly, 11, County Engineers Office requesting the board acknowledge the recommendation in post-load limits for Pioneer Road, structure GEAT-0116-0092 in Huntsburg Township for the emergency vehicle weight limit, two axles, 28 tons; three axles, 41 tons pursuant to ORC 5577.071.
So I move to approve items number 10, 11 on each one, though.
Second.
Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good to.
Thank you. Good to.
Morning.
Morning. Jim Flayz from the Jodah County Rescue's Office. So I am here for Agenda Item Number 12. At least a couple of you were here back in December when I asked if we could move forward with this renovation security upgrade project for the Prosecutor's Office. So we started that process back at the beginning of the year. The, we've been working with TDA. I did tell them at one point, which is why it's stretched out a little longer than I would have liked, but kind of an allocation of resources, they were working on the youth center. And because there was a grant involved, I had told them, "Hey, why don't you work on that?" And, you know, put an eye on the back burner. So they did do that, but then we, we kind of re-engaged with them earlier in the summer, maybe late spring. And so we've got the final drawings. Those have been submitted to the County Building Department. And there's a conditional approval. The only conditions are a final write-up of the, in case they move any sprinkler heads or the fire detection system. Although, it's doubtful that they're really going to have to mess with any of that because for that portion of the project, we're just kind of adding some walls and basically cutting up some existing space to create additional offices. But the main part is front lobby. The, we're going to make that much more secure. And one of the things that did change between when I was back in December and now, I was over at the courthouse for one of the walkthroughs, and they have some ballistic board they're putting in in the courtroom, in some areas in the courtrooms. That was a really nice product, a little more expensive. But I did ask them to spec that out for the lobby wall so that, you know, while we're doing some ballistic glass in there, I wanted that same board that they're using over in the courthouse, which is a little pricey. But, but again, the projected project cost is, is still under $300,000. Additionally, with funding, one of the things we have been looking at, I know Adrian mentioned transferring the funding, I think in the, in the building renovation fund, I think there's about $4 million in there, set aside for, for different renovations. But in, for this funding, what we're looking at is maybe taking some funding from the delinquent real estate tax account, which are restricted funds. But we've been doing some research on that, and some of that, some of those funds were used the last time the Prosecutor's Office was, was remodeled, and we think we can use some of those funds towards this. So our goal is to lessen the burden on the General Fund and hopefully maybe get the Commissioner's share under 200 and make up the rest with, with those funds. So we're going to use those funds as, as much as we legally can.
And there was also some reutilization of the space, right?
Yes. Yeah, so like.
So it was mostly a safety focus, but?
In the front lobby, yes. The, so this will, this will create, in the, in the front lobby area, there's some significant security upgrades. And then kind of partitioning that space and creating an office up front, and then a very small, more reception window. So creating an office there. And then where my office is, we're basically cutting it in half and creating another office out of some space there because I have a little conference area in my office. And then we have over, like, we have a copy area kind of in the hallway, and we're creating an office out of that, which will just be flex space for now. But in case, we don't need to fill those offices. The one, we're, we're one office short right now, so this will create three offices. But I just, I don't want to go through all this and not have some room for expansion.
So that was what I, I mean, that was going to be my next question, is making sure that we're preparing for the future, not just today, but it sounds like that's part of the project.
Yes. And this is the most I can squeeze out of this word for it, so. But, but I, I think it's, you know, TDA was wonderful. They did the original, it's been about 20 years, I think, since, since the original design for the really big remodel that was up there. And TDA actually did that, and the architect that was on that project is working on this project. And so that was very helpful, and I felt gave us a lot of cost savings because they had, they had the original file from everything. So they have photos from when it was gutted, and it, it really made things a lot easier on us.
Okay. Great. Second. Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Now, when the bids come in, I'll be back.
Thanks.
I like the new microphone setup. You can actually hear in the back of the room.
Might use try, yeah. I feel too loud.
Scott Hildebrand, Tom Rowan from the Sheriff's Office. Item number 13 is the Stop Violence Against Women's Act Grant from OCJAS. And with a $20,000 local match, it totals $80,000. It pays for the deputy that's assigned to that. She deals with the domestic violence victims and any other victims that are victims of crime. She's, she's assigned to that and does a very good job of it, so.
I move to approve item number 13.
Second.
Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffin? Aye. Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Item 14 is the new agreement with University Hospital Systems for, to provide physician services to the inmates at Safety Center to increase the hourly rate of the doctors and physicians. UH claims that they're actually still losing money by doing this, but they want to do a service so that the, the amount is not to exceed $77,250 per calendar year.
So I was going to ask, so what gave rise to this? Did the prior contract expire? And then you renegotiate? Is that what's going on here?
Yeah, it's renewed.
Okay. These, I mean, the cost went up a lot. It looks like the PA costs doubled. The doctor costs are almost up like 30%. And, but according to you, they're still losing money?
Well, and that's, that's what they're telling us.
I mean, it's lower than what I charged for an hour, so I, the percentage is significant.
And, and actually, we have a good ER, or good doctor that's assigned. He doesn't, he, I mean, it's correctional medicine, so it's, it's, you know, you, you gotta be able to deal with the people that you're dealing with, your, your patients. And the PA does a really good job. So they need to look through the real emergencies and people that just want to come in and see the doctor. So, and they, and they see a lot. They see a lot, a lot of people every day.
So can you give me, like, just a primer, I guess, on who pays for inmate medical care? Like, are some people insured? Does there only have Medicare or Medicaid? So how, how does that all work?
When you're in jail, that, that stuff stops. Medicare, Medicaid, we can, we can bill some of those now.
Okay.
But for the most part, we're all paying for it.
Okay. The taxpayers are on that, for a little bit. Okay. Got it. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 14.
Second.
Ms. Spiller?
Ms. Ruffin? Aye.
Yes.
Other than ICE inmates, ICE pays for all of their medical stuff.
Okay. I should have asked.
So we don't pay for anything.
All right. That's good to know.
Thank you.
Feel very safe for the county prosecutor and the county sheriff. How are you guys? So I'm just back here with item 15 and 16. Craig Swenson from the Department of Job and Family Services. Thank you. Sorry, apologize. Items 15 and 16, first 15, requesting the board acknowledge the receipt of the certificate of estimated property tax from the Auditor's Office that we received, demonstrating that it is $15 per $100,000 of valuation for our levy renewal for our .7 mil levy. So I'm just asking the board to first recognize receipt of that.
I move to approve item number 15.
Second.
Ms. Spiller?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffin? Aye. Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And next is part two of the two-step process to get the levy placed on the ballot. Again, just want to reiterate to, you know, for the public that this is just a straight renewal levy. There will be no change to property tax bill. Again, it's to support children's services, which again, is just a continuing need. This board knows that I track these dollars very, very carefully. And with the increasing costs, just I was, had to sign and approve a placement that right now is $1,400 a day.
Is that the RITs? Is that where they're staying?
It's just, it's unbelievable. And you, you get put in a position where, you know, you're told that, that, from, from doctors and from medical personnel, that this placement is in the best interest of these children. And it's very hard for me, as I'm not a doctor, to say that this is not where this child needs to go. Thankfully, it's a short-term placement, but it's just these placements, it's a recurring theme for these, for these kids and for these JFS directors. We're all around, talking around each other, and we're trying to find, hey, where, where are you, where are you getting the best deal? You know, for some of these placements. But it's, it's incredible. I really hope that there's going to be some type of fix or some type of cap that can be put, put on these because they, they keep the scene going up, and there's a placement shortage for children in need. And so, and that placement's in Virginia. So now, so I have staff.
So you have somebody going to Virginia?
And so not only do I have, because the child's currently in Maryland, the placement's in Virginia, and I have to pay for staff to drive to Maryland, bring this child to Virginia, and then stay in Virginia and kind of observe that placement in Virginia. And then, you know, ensure that it's.
But the child's a JAG resident?
Yep. Yep. And this is the child's third placement. You know, third family that they've been with. And they're going to this residential placement because the placement right now is tenuous. And it's, we don't want it to disrupt, but they, they feel that this child's in need of residential placement, and we're hoping to pursue this. so then when the child goes back, that it's better. Um, and so we've invested a lot, um, for this one child, obviously. Um, and, um, it's, we just hope it works out. We hope it's, it's worth the dollars that we're spending. Um, but otherwise, then it's, we start the whole ball of wax over again if it doesn't work out. So anyway, that's just one example, but it, it's, my staff's doing an incredible job and, um, the, this money is very well spent and very well invested. So I, um, just ask for, to be put on the ballot and for, you know, hopefully we'll be okay.
And is that, this is a qualified levy? Is that correct?
This one is the qualified levy, yeah.
So we get a portion of the money from the state as well?
That is correct. It's, it's less for the tax, taxpayer, yeah.
Right. Yeah. A little more bang for our buck here in County County, which we always like. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve item number seventeen.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Thank you guys so much for being so supportive to the agency.
Oh, Craig, can you talk about the Help Me Learn event today before you-
Oh, yeah. Are you go, are you gonna go?
I was going to, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, thank you.
I think it's something that a community may be interested in.
Oh, I, I, thank you. I didn't want to spend too much time up here, but Sarah Scheniger, I don't know, I'm just too loud. I don't need this thing up.
I feel like that, too.
We don't need these mics.
I think maybe the two mics that are in front of Craig may be too close to each other and it may be-
Oh, it'd be the interviewing?
Because we moved the table forward. I wonder if that's part of it.
All right. I apologize.
I know, but we need to talk into them though for that, you too, even if people in the room can hear.
I feel like I'm just making everyone cringe. Um, no, thank you so much for bringing that up. Help Me Learn, it's been going along for, for, I want to say it's close to twenty years.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm not. That's a good part.
I keep moving further away. Um, and Sarah Scheniger, who, um, is, does a tremendous job. She operates our special services.
He's right. There we go.
Um, this is very eerie. Um, with that being said, Sarah Scheniger, uh, she oversees, um, we're the only JFS that I'm aware of that also operates a five oh one C three operation within our agency. And so, um, and this is where we're able to take in all our taxpayer donations, um, from the community, which, um, we receive a significant, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars of donations annually from the community to support, um, causes where essentially we're filling in the cracks for the community. And this is just one of those events where low-income residents, um, with children that are gonna be attending school can come, um, to, it's being held at Morning Star Church, um, is the first day today. And then it'll also be at Chagrin Falls Park, uh, on another day. So we kind of hit both sides of the county. And we provide them with full, we, school supplies, everything that they need. We actually obtain information from all the schools, knowing what cha, what supplies children need in advance, so we have them. They can shop free for clothing. And these are, these are new and very, very gently used items. I mean, nothing that you'd see at a garage sale, where they can come and pick out their clothing for the school year. We provide dental, um, checkups. We provide eye checkups and also free haircuts, um, to all these kids that are low-income that, um, want to come and get this. And so that will be today at Morning Star Church. Um, and everything is free, um, for the families and for the kids, and, uh, all based on donations from the community. So this is just one event in, in service of many that Special Services of JAG County provides to the community. Um, and again, Sarah does a tremendous job and, and she's been overseeing this for years and owe a lot of credit to her. So, thank you very much. And I hope the commissioners, you guys can, uh, come and check it out. I, I know you, you've been, you've stopped by in the past.
Yeah, a couple times. And then, you know, impressed with the book bags, the haircuts and socks and-
Everything.
Everything.
It's like, it's like you go walking into a JCPenney in a church down there.
Oh, the JCPenney.
Well, maybe we can upgrade to a Nordstrom or something, you know, but no. So anyway, thank you very much for the plug. I appreciate it.
Great, great.
Thanks, Greg.
Good morning. Charles Tiket with the Maintenance Department. Uh, I have item number seventeen on the agenda. Uh, the Maintenance Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the Safety Center parking lot repaid to be held on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, uh, at two P M. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on August eighth and August fifteenth and also on the county website.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve the creation title, job description for position of an HVAC technician to be effective August fifth. Um, what I'm looking at here is trying to do something like we have with our electrician, where we can get them in right away and check in all this stuff. Also with, um, right now we're in the process of updating the automation for the annex building. Uh, the courthouse has the annex and the courthouse on one system. So it's a standard room system, so we're looking at an automation system. Um, with that, it can be seen from anywhere. So that way we can also have one person looking at everything, um, and then go off on that. So I think this will be a tremendous help. Uh, with the electrician, it has been a tremendous help of getting smaller projects done, all the time with that. So I think this will work with that also.
Yeah. Plus, I mean, I think they'll have a better understanding of our building and our systems, so you don't have someone, you know, contractor coming in that's trying to, to figure out what's going on. You have somebody that's kind of intimately knowledgeable about those systems. Um, can you talk about annually what we're paying for, um, feedback services that we're contracting out right now?
We have approximately, we have, uh, three contracts with that. Uh, they are- I thought I had that off top.
I got it somewhere if you don't.
Okay.
Let me see. Um, okay. So it looks like in twenty twenty-four, we spent about eighty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then out of today, we've spent almost a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, um, just for this year.
With those contracts, that's a basic maintenance.
Yeah.
Changing things, coming in and making sure every year, uh, when something does break, we call them up also. And then they come out and then we get a quote of if it's something major, we go from there and get it fixed.
I get any H check issues, I mean, that's something we need to fix quickly. That's not something we want to wait, right? Until, you know, someone may be available on a week.
If I can get somebody in there right away and diagnose it, uh, that's outstanding. And then that way they can talk with the contractor or, or whatever we need to do.
Right. Yeah, figure out the situation.
We need to, let's get it on order.
Um, so I'll make a motion to approve item number eighteen.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Uh, the number nineteen is the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve the addition of a second project manager position to be effective August fifth. As you're all aware, um, we have a lot, a lot of projects coming up, a lot of things, um, Linda was taken care of, that's been kind of thrown my way. Uh, so we're looking at this, the, with the youth center and, and all these other projects and everything coming up. So, um, I think this will be a tremendous help, not just with the Commissioner's Office, but with the county in, in all.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I want to see your department able to succeed. And I feel like you're, you don't have enough staffing right now to, to fully do that. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve item number nineteen. I'll mention that.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink.
Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Uh, number ten, twenty is just to revise the organization chart to add in the HVAC technician.
I move to approve.
Hey, Glenn. Then also include your project manager. Just a second. Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Number twenty-one and twenty-two is a permission to advertise for these oppositions.
Um, I move to approve item number twenty-one and twenty-two.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Thank you all. Good deck. We'll talk to you later.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are all eighth amendments to the credit card resolution to authorize use. This includes the new dog warden, job credit and visa, and updates by adding and removing, um, employees in the Commissioner's Office and the Maintenance Department, um, for this year. And then twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six are the applications for those changes.
So Christie, I know I asked this question before and I don't remember what the answer is, but are we able to add these credit card issues to the things that county administrators can?
Not right now. We are currently working with the auditor's office and the prosecutor's office and making some changes, um, to the current layout and some tweaks for going forward on how some of this stuff can be handled.
To make it a little more streamlined, so we don't have to approve a credit card for something or another every-
Yeah. Cause right now, right now, we have about six steps in the process from beginning to end on, on changes with credit cards.
Oh, okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve items number twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board accept the resignation of Ms. Linda Brerhenny, Assistant County Administrator, to be effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve the creation title and job description for the position of Deputy County Administrator, number thirteen twenty-four, to be effective August fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Amy, can you talk a little bit about how this position changed from, um, Ms. Brerhenny's former position?
Yes, I'm happy to. I was gonna cover that in item thirty.
Oh, all right.
While we requested to hire, but I'm definitely happy to do that now. Um, so if you don't mind, I can talk a little bit about the Deputy County Administrator. We changed the title from Assistant County Administrator to Deputy County Administrator. Uh, so what is a Deputy County Administrator? We're seeking, um, uh, an administrator. It's an executive level leadership position, role within the Board of County Commissioners Office, providing a high level of operational and strategic support. The deputy will assist the county administrator in facilitating cross-departmental coordination, leading capital and infrastructure planning, guiding human resources, and managing public relations and community engagement efforts. They will oversee key projects, assisting in policy implementation, preparing briefing materials, and representing the board in public forums, uh, all in service of ensuring efficient, transparent, and effective county government. So what are we looking for, uh, which is relevant to item thirty on the agenda as well? Uh, we are seeking a dynamic, experienced professional to serve as Deputy County Administrator, which is someone with a robust knowledge of administration, strategic planning, human resources, facility planning, and community engagement. The ideal candidate would excel at both strategic vision and operational execution, with strong communication, leadership, analytical, project management, and public relations skills. They must be able to demonstrate sound judgment, political acumen, and the ability to build consensus among elected officials, department heads, and the public while navigating sensitive and confidential matters with integrity and discretion. Experience in government is preferred, along with a bachelor's or master's degree. And, uh, if you meet some or all of these qualifications, we would encourage you to submit your resume. And in terms of hiring, the goal is to get the job posting out before the end of the week.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you, I obviously spent a lot of time thinking about this role and, um, how this person can best support, um, the Commissioner's Office, you, and, and staff. And I think, um, I, I really appreciate the work and look forward to hearing about the hiring process.
Thank you for the support. So item twenty-eight. Um, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-eight.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart to include the new position of Deputy County Administrator, number thirteen twenty-four, effective August fifth, and remove the Assistant County Administrator position effective August seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Item number thirty, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of Deputy County Administrator, number thirteen twenty-four. The position will remain posted until filled. I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Aye.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
Item number thirty-one, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the letter of engagement with McDonald Hopkins LLC for General Services Retainer Program for the year twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars unless prior approval by the board. I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
First thing.
Mr. Brink. Aye.
Mr. DeWort.
Yes.
What's your conflict, Commissioner?
Just, it was really briefed on what exactly this was going to involve or had it opportunity to talk to him or anything.
I'm happy to address that. So this would be the addition of a, a secondary general services council. So we have one already, a primary. This would give us a secondary. And then we do have, uh, one for bond counsel as well. So just a level of duality for us there, probably nothing more than that.
Yeah. And I mean, there's a whole process of getting the contract approved by the prosecutor's office and so forth. So I think it's good to have that taken care of now before something comes up, rather than, you know, there'd be a conflict with the prosecutor's office and our other counsel, and then we're kind of scrambling, trying to figure out who's gonna represent us on this issue.
So how was the selection process done? Interviews of the candidates?
Well, we opened it up to the board to ask if you had any particular firms that you were looking at. Uh, and this one was raised and we looked into it and pursued it.
I mean, I think that, you know, I think it would've been nice to be able to have had a interview one-on-one with, with the different candidates to really, um, you know, go through an actual interview process to, you know, as far as asking different questions. So.
Would you like to come up and, uh, say a couple words, um, based on your company?
Commissioners, my name is Brian Guster. On behalf of McDonald Hopkins, I do appreciate the vote that you gave here today. Uh, McDonald Hopkins is a full-service firm. We are located here in Cleveland, Detroit, Baltimore, West Palm Beach, uh, and I think I got them. Uh, we've been doing work here in the county for several years. In fact, I was named a special prosecutor of this county several years ago. Um, and, uh, we've got a breadth of knowledge, um, that I think would quite, um, be beneficial to the county in times of need. Um, we, we understand that you already have prior counsel and we would never seek to supplant them. And that you all have, uh, the prosecutor's office, which is an outstanding organization and office. And again, we would never seek to supplant them. Uh, we're here to help you in times of need, when there are issues that come up, where there may be conflicts and/or an area of expertise that we have that others don't. Um, things that we do that are, are key and many other firms don't have these issues is, you know, we, we also do bond work. Um, we also do government contracting procurement. Um, we have an outstanding public law team that, that works on tax, exam financing, um, accountants, ethics. Um, we do a lot of tax levy law. Um, but what is a, a key differentiator is, um, we live now in a society in which cyber law and cybersecurity is of, uh, key interest and of, um, really it should be at one of the top things that any government agencies should be looking at. And we have an outstanding cyber law and prevention and incident response unit. So in the event, um, that there is a cyber incident here in the county, we actually have a dedicated team of attorneys and specialists that can come in and lock down the system, help your ADP department do everything that is required in a- your ADP department do everything that is required in a response-type incident. In addition, I do a lot of government compliance work, litigation, appeals, at any time in which your prosecutor's office can't handle those things because of conflicts or, or other issues, we are here and are able to step in immediately. We also have a robust employment and labor law department, and we're able to help in those issues as well. So at that, I've said a lot, if you have any questions, concerns, things that you want to talk with me about, since, as you said, Commissioner, we didn't have a chance to talk previously, but we've had chances in the past, so is there anything that you guys would like to talk about, or questions that you have of me? Outside of that, I do appreciate your time and your trust in McDonald-Hopkins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So item thirty-two, I do have one item that I want to revisit from... So I do want to revisit the plaque, I know the last session we were on it was a breach of decision, so those initial three were still options one, two, and three, I've added option four, which is what Commissioner Spudler had recommended, replacing his name with Commissioner Lennon's on the plaque, so that would be option four. Option five is for us to receive a credit, so we, the plaque has already been included in the project itself, if we chose not to do a plaque, it would be a six, roughly a six thousand dollar credit back towards the project itself. And then a sixth option was presented to put on the plaque to the people of Jogga County. So, there's a number of different options, I thought maybe we could just open it back up for discussion, to see if any of these additional three might strike you in a different way, and we could try to get a resolution on which direction to go with the plaque.
I like my credit.
The credit? Are we going to say, Commissioner?
An option four, since I'm from the construction industry, on this particular job, eighty percent or more of the people live in Jogga County and working here on the project, and even as far as seventy-five percent or more of then-designed NV5, the owner's ground, and Infinity Construction. It's, it's heartwarming for me to go in different buildings across this county, libraries, churches, and government buildings, to see George Accony's name on there, that built a lot of schools, and my dad, and retired, and people that's passed on. When they see that, they go, I was part of that, I played the breaker, I did the electrical, I did the plumbing. So this is just a standard, historically, option four, that's, you know, I'm leaning towards that at this moment.
Do you need a decision on this today, Amy?
We don't, I just wanted to bring it up, just to give you the additional options, I can send you a recap of this Friday's email, just to allow you an opportunity, we could always put it back on the agenda for next week as an official item, to give you another week or so to think about it, and then hopefully maybe next week we can decide. That's all I have for open discussion, or board discussion.
Okay.
I, I did have a note, Commissioner, for thirty-three, for public comment, we do have some new audio procedures in here, you'll notice the microphone, so if you do want to make a public comment, we have, I have a mic, so I can pass it around, or you're welcome to come up to the table, otherwise you probably will not be heard in presenting your question, just the way the audio has changed.
Okay, is there any public comment at this time?
Do you like the microphone on the occasion?
I know, I feel like a talk show.
Anastasia Nekras, Sugar and Valley Times. So do you approve McDonald-Hopkins?
Yes.
Uda?
Yes.
Okay, I miss that. And does that have anything to do with Judge Grendel suing, like, the timing of it?
No, it does not.
Okay, would he possibly be counsel for that?
I, I believe in, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe currently the case has been submitted to Corso, our insurance provider, to see if they will cover it, if they will cover it, they will provide, they'll sign counsel requests.
And can you give any update on that lawsuit, or any comment?
I mean, the lawsuit's been filed, and I know several of the judges have accused themselves from hearing the case.
I feel a lot of discomfort.
Great.
We'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
You ready, Yot? Yes, Mia?
Hope this is correct, doesn't sound any different.
Looks great.
Thank you. The gentleman who came up to represent McDonald-Hopkins, I'm afraid I did not catch his name, and wondered if that information could be related to all of us at this time.
Yeah, his name is Brian Castor, Brian with a Y, right, Brian?
A Y, that's right.
Alright, I got it. And Castor's with a K.
Thank you.
What else?
Anyone else? Hearing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Anybody?